Alright, we are live, but we're about one minute till start time. We'll give it a minute. We need some background music.
I was like, does anyone know a good joke?
Good joke.
What do you call a fake noodle?
A faux noodle?
An imposter. Stop that.
Donovan, if you're listening, I've got someone that you can actually probably engage with.
I got a hello, I don't know who it's from. Hello?
Well, let me see.
Very good.
Dana, hello Dana.
Oh, hello Dana. So this is actually a funny story. But Brian and I, so when I was a junior in high school, uh, Brian would have been in dental school. Um, we made a trip to Quatico, Canada. I'm sure he's talking, he loves to talk about it. Um, fishing and canoeing and we drove there from Dallas and uh, that's like a thirty-six hour drive, it was really long drive and we just drove through. So we were with three other guys and uh, Brian was in one car, I was in another and trying to just stay awake. We had CB radios and so we told yo mama jokes for hours at like three in the morning on the CB radio, which I thought, that's kinda humorous, cause we had the same uh.
That's true.
Uh, and we did that until uh.
What do they call that? That actually is a, there's a phrase that they use, something to the, it's uh, nevermind, go ahead.
Yeah, you lost me, I don't know. So anyways, until, we did that until a truck driver got on and started yelling at us. Cause he was tired of listening to our jokes.
Like, you're all funny.
Right, and I was like, okay, sorry.
There she is. Hello.
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 Good vibes.
So, welcome online, glad that y'all are with us and uh, I said, there's one person with us, but here's, here's the hope and I, and I know that uh, people have gone back and watched, I've gotten a few texts from even some friends of ours in Fort Worth that have gotten on and watched and so uh, so it's exciting and I know that uh, when you get on, um, the goal of this is there's gonna be probably one more video, cause today we're gonna only get through chapter seventeen, which is gonna leave us four chapters short of the end, but uh, this will stay on our website and on our Facebook page and we'll, what we'll do is we, all these packets that I'm, you know, putting together that are specific to kinda the lesson of the day. What we'll do is we'll combine that in one packet, so someone can download the packet, if you will. Use it in their own personal devotions. I think it's, as I'm kinda been looking and putting it together, I think it's most helpful, like if you're just sitting down and doing a little bit of reading every day, it really helps to follow along, kinda forces your brain to engage in the text, slow the reading down, the goal isn't to just get through it, to slow it down. Engage in the text a little bit, um, make sure we're following along, it makes us think perhaps a little broader than what the the words on, on, and on paper are. Um, you know, so we'll have one, just one packet, and I think if a person were to sit down and go through that whole packet, it, it really would uh, be a very strong devotional exercise for them. It's a lot, I mean, it, I think it's on page seventy-five right now and you know, so it'll probably, you know, get close to a hundred pages, but but there's a lot of just little things in there and, and what I kinda thought I'd do is as you know, we read new commentaries and read new things and something pops up, I can always go back to this, this and just add little footnotes. There's a lot of just little information in the footnotes too that I think are interesting and helpful and that's why I put them in there, uh, cause I hope that y'all would find them interesting and helpful as well, but um, so that's kinda the goal of this, is that then we will have online, you know, six lectures, if you will, and conversations that someone could listen to to kinda help spark uh, their own thoughts and outline and then their bibles that they could go through and and really make for a nice personal devotion always at their fingertips and really dive into the book of John. So, so that's the goal. Um, and I thought, you know, if we do this, I think this hopefully is a lot more effective than trying to say, as David, remember, we decided we were gonna read, study the book of Exodus and like thirty-six weeks later.
We got midway through.
Right, it's, it, it just, we were too slow and go, so this kinda gives the opportunity for someone to cover every single chapter, walk through every chapter. It gives us a chance to kinda touch on the highlights, get the general narrative and, um, but then gives us the resources to really dive in verse by verse as well. So that's the goal. Let's say a word of prayer though. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege we have to gather together, Lord, and to study your word and to dive into uh, um, to the gospel of John that uh, that reminds us that you are the word incarnate. And so Heavenly Father, um, that you dwell and live with us, we give you thanks and praise. And we pray that you would guide us in our conversation and our study, as we pray this all in your son's name, amen. Alright, I'm gonna just kinda, I didn't adjust the sound at all, so I'm gonna do that too. So maybe that helps a little bit, that might be too much, back that off a little bit. Okay. I think that'll work. Sorry, all these little technical things, we're kinda learning as we go, so that's still getting into the red, let's back it up one more time. Okay, so hopefully that clears it up a little bit, but um, so we uh, we kinda touched on a number of different chapters last week, I wanna kinda start, pick up in chapter thirteen and and if we pick up in chapter thirteen, um, we'll find the, we're, we're at, I mean, we're at go time, okay? Um, so throughout the first twelve chapters, Jesus has performed some amazing miracles and in those amazing miracles he's performed, he's had his just very blunt and blatant statements of, you know, I am the, I and the Father are one, right? Um, he's poked the bear a few times, the bear being that of the Pharisees. Um, everything, we talked about the healing of the uh, lame person in the pool of Shalom uh, at Beth- Beth- Bethesda, right, and how he says, pick up your mat and walk, um, and, and he's literally poked the bear, did that, cause he knew it was Sabbath. He knew that would upset the Pharisees. It's just a growing tension. Um, the Pharisees, as you know, have sought to kill him. Um, and uh, tried on two different occasions, a plot to stone him to death. On both occasions, he just kinda slipped away to the crowd, it said. Um, then they were kinda, not hiding out, but they were keeping their distance. Um, until what happened? Anybody remember? Bueller?
Wasn't tracking what we saw.
No, until Lazarus died. Right, so they're keeping their distance till Lazarus died and then they're like, well, if Lazarus is sick and ill and dying or dead, we wanna go back and be there, right? Oh, but Jesus, we can't go back there because if we go back there, the, the Jews are there, the same ones that wanna kill you. Does that stop Jesus? Well, no, why should it stop him? He's not afraid, right? He's Jesus. And so he goes back and uh, of course, they, uh, Mary and Martha go out to meet him, as opposed to him going to the house. They do that to try to protect Jesus. Uh, but yet the Jews followed as Mary went and as they followed, um, they found Jesus and Jesus, as we all know the story, brought Lazarus back from the dead. And it says there that many of the Jews then believed, many of them believed, but yet still some reported to the Pharisees what had happened and the Pharisees not only sought to kill Jesus, but who else? Lazarus as well, right. So he went out to kill Jesus and Lazarus, which I think is just crazy and you know, they brought, Jesus brings Lazarus from the dead and the Jews, or the Pharisees go, now we gotta kill Lazarus too. So there was always a kill order already in place on Jesus and now on Lazarus as well. Um, so it makes you think, you know, if somebody, you know, did Lazarus go, well, thanks a lot, Jesus? No, cause he wouldn't be alive anyways, he was already dead, right? Um, I wonder if he was like, you brought me back just so they could have a kill order on, I don't think that happened, I don't know, but anyways. But so that's kinda where you have, the tension is just really grown, it's, it's, it's no longer, you could say, tension, it is a full-blown conflict. There's a, there is a full-blown blown tragedy that you know is coming around the corner. Um, they are after Jesus, they are plotting and seeking to kill him. Um, the two attempts that they've made kinda have, have been impromptu and haven't worked, but now what do we know? We know that there's now a plan that's gonna grow and come into place, right? And so that's where we are. So we're at the hour, okay? We're at the hour where everything is coming to an end. Now, John being twenty-one chapters, I know I said sixteen last week, I don't know where I was thinking, but it's twenty-one chapters, we're only at verse thirteen, so it's not much more than halfway, we're already getting into the passion narrative. So the passion narrative really starts here in John chapter thirteen. I think that's kinda interesting. Um, how quickly things progress in John. And so in thirteen, we have Jesus washing the disciples' feet. Um, this is a great text, I'm gonna spend a little bit of time in he- in here and then we'll kinda go quickly and accelerate to chapter seventeen, which is uh, Jesus' high priestly prayer. So, you have here, um, before the feast of the Passover, Jesus knew that the hour had come to depart, and I'm reading John thirteen, verse one. Um, he knew it was time to eh, eh, depart out of this world. So what does that tell us? What do you think? What does that tell us in that very first verse?
Tell us about what?
Well, what does that tell us? So read that first verse again. Now, before the feast of the Passover, when Jesus knew that his hour had come to depart out of this world to the Father. Tells us he knew his faith, yeah. He knew what was coming. He knew his death was at hand and he knew that not only was it at hand, but he knew the immediacy of that death was at hand. He knew it was coming anytime.
But he says that several times in his ministry.
Yes. Now, in John, he doesn't have quite the, um, it is necessary statements like you would find in Matthew. But you're right, he does. Um, throughout his ministry, especially when you're reading like Matthew and Mark, on several occasions, he tells the disciples, you know I'm going to die soon, right? You know when I get to Jerusalem, I'm gonna die. Soon as he leaves the Mount of Transfiguration, especially, it really ramps up right after that. Um, but you're right. Um, and John, um, it just kinda, the tension is building and then it's, and then you get to Jesus saying, it's here. This, this is the hour. This is when it all is gonna start. But now we know that Jesus doesn't die on this day, so what is he referring to when he says, this is the hour, you think?
Just the time?
Yeah, I think that the, the whole time. So, so what happens in this coming hour, literally? You have the betrayal is revealed, right, with Judas, and then with the betrayal being revealed, you have um, leading right into Good Friday. Um, just an important note on the timing of this, there's a lot of debate. Um, and I'm gonna just skip over all the debate, uh, but the debate is the timing, okay? How do you count day one, day two, day three? We know it's three days from the time when Jesus rose from the dead, right? Um, I will say it is worth noting that the Jewish, um, the way they numbered days or understood days, um, so if, like for instance, it, it is six, you know, forty-five almost, um, the sun is down, right? So it would no longer be Wednesday, it would now be Thursday. Does that make sense? So the day begins at the end of dawn, so when sunset happens, um, that begins then the next day. And so it's just a, just the way they understood things. And so you have Thursday, the, the Lord's supper and the, and the preparing of the meal, probably even that same night, right? Um, would have been the betrayal, which would have been what? Good Friday, right? And then, and after the betrayal, you have uh, uh, him being crucified, died, and then you have Saturday and Sunday. And now you have the three days. And so, but there's a lot of debate about it, it, uh, how you do that. I put it, I started to put that a little bit in there, if you look in the handout, did, did you get a handout?
Of course, I did.
Okay, okay. Um, so if you look at the handout, you, I, it, it gets, I start, I try to summarize it just as briefly and simply as I could. Um, but man, you could write a whole bunch on that. I, I got to the point where I was like, that's enough, we'll just move on, so. Um, but the point of the matter is that Jesus knew that this is kinda the beginning of the end and that's exactly what ver- chapter thirteen starts. He knows that, that everything that happens from this point on is going to lead to his death on the cross. Um, so in verse two, it says during supper when, um, the devil, right, and this is kinda interesting, had already put it into the heart of Judas Iscariot, Simon's son, to betray him. That's an interesting statement, right? Um, I think John is the only one that kinda says it that way. The other kinda have a narrative of Judas' line of thought of the betrayal, of going to the um, high priest, receiving the silver, right, and, and, and uh, the betrayal that way. Um, but uh, here, what does John say? He says, the devil already dwelled in Judas' heart. I don't know, what does that make y'all think of?
Well, I mean, when we see evil committed in the Bible, I'd go back to the plagues and it always says that Pharaoh hardened, hardened his, hardened his heart. Was it Satan helping do that? Sometimes God, God would allow it.
Sometimes it says even God hardened Pharaoh's heart, but then the other times, yeah, was it Pharaoh, was it Satan? You know, one of the things that made me think of, and we talked about this a little bit in here, is in John chapter eight, um, he looks at the Pharisees and he says, you are of your father. Now, if you're thinking, if you're a Pharisee and somebody says, you are of your father, what would you think of? God or even Abraham, right, or Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, something along those lines? And Jesus says, you are of your father, the devil, right? Let's, let's see if we can find that real quick, you know, it might help refresh our brains a little bit. So if you go to chapter eight, verse thirty-nine, and, and this is uh, after the woman caught adultery, Jesus says, I am the light of the world. Everyone who brought to sin is a slave to sin, uh, abide in the truth. Um, if you even back up to verse thirty-seven, um, I know that you are offspring of Abraham, yet you seek to kill me because my word finds no place in you. I speak of what I have seen with my father, right, and you do what you have heard from your father. Okay, now, what are they assuming he means when he says that? They would assume Abraham, right? And so they answered him, Abraham is our father. And Jesus said to them, if you were Abraham's children, you would be doing the works Abraham did. But now you seek to kill me, a man who has told you the truth that I heard from God. This is not what Abraham did. You are doing the works of your fa- that your father did. They said to him, we were not born of sexual morality, we have one father, even God. Jesus said to them, if God were your father, you would love me, for I came, or I came from God and I am here. I come not of my own accord, but he sent me. Why do you not understand what I say? It's because you cannot hear my word. You are of your father, the devil, and your will is to do your father's desire, right? Why are they of their father, the devil? Well, because they have a desire to kill Jesus. And he says, if you are of your father, Abraham, you would not want to kill me. But the fact that you wanna kill me tells me you are of your father and your father is the devil himself. So he kinda alludes to the fact of what is the devil's goal when it comes to Jesus, right? Um, part of it is, he's a murderer, right? Um, there's a great article, I, I alluded to it, we talked about it a few weeks ago, that you can find in ConcordiaTheology.org. Um, but even kinda points to Cain, that's getting to a whole nother conversation, but, but the idea is Cain, i- i- it could be saying, you are of Cain, whose father is the devil. Well, what is, what is, and that's, there's a textual variance there, but what is Cain known for?
First murder.
The first murder, that's right, he's the first one who killed, right? And uh, and so what he, what it is implying, and it, and the article goes into Cyril of Alexandria, who's, who's talking about John and what, what it is implying is that Cain was simply doing the acts that reflect his father, who is the devil. And so what Jesus could be implying is you are simply resembling who your father is, right? Wouldn't we say that about our kids? They represent or resemble who our father is? I mean, not always, but sometimes, right? And, and uh, certainly that in the Old Testament, it was seen that way. That's why you would name people, you're Simon's son of. Even here, it says, you're Judas, and then it says who his son is, right? Um, but then it says, um, and I'm talking about here in verse thirteen. So, but, um, the devil, we, we get a glimpse there of Jesus saying, look, the devil's goal is to destroy me, certainly not Abraham's goal was not to destroy, uh, but rather to do the opposite, point to me. And he says, so um, the devil's goal is to destroy. That's in chapter eight. So here we are now in chapter thirteen and guess who it is? Who is within Judas, right, had entered into Judas, right, or put into the heart of Judas, uh, Simon's son, to betray him, right? The devil himself did. Um, and so here the devil is, or Je- Judas has this idea and almost reads like C.S. Lewis and the Screwtape Letters. I mean, I, I love it. Um, I, I guess you would say C.S. Lewis and Screwtape Letters read like the Bible, rather than the Bible reads like C.S. Lewis, but but the idea here is that uh, um, you, you almost get this image of the devil going and, and saying, alright, now let me entice him with this idea that seems sounding good, but is meant really to destroy him for evil.
Well, I was gonna say a little earlier, and it's reflected in uh, eight that you just brought up, that uh, Satan's ultimate goal is to murder, murder by any means.
Right.
In Judas, it's, and with the Pharisees, it's including lying, uh, twisting. And he says, um, your will is to do your father's desires, he was a murderer from the beginning and does not stand in the truth, because there is no truth in him. So it's really like a win at all costs.
Right. Willing to do anything, lie, cheat and steal. You know, and it is interesting, as you go throughout all the Old Testament, are there any examples of the devil murdering? I don't, I don't know of any.
No, and in fact, I was gonna ask you that, but it's a little premature, but uh, at this point, the Pharisees could order Christ to be stoned. Because they've accused him of blasphemy and it would be, at least from their end, with their power and authority here on earth, a good case that they could make for him to be stoned.
On two occasions, they tried to, right?
So they, they end up turning it over to Rome because they don't want the blood on their hands.
Right, at some point, they, they start to get strategic.
Which is very Satan-like, because to your point, that's where I was going with that. Satan doesn't have blood on his hands, even though he does. I mean, he always allows it to be done by somebody else's hand.
Yeah. And, and I think that's what I think, find interesting, you know, the Bible says the devil is a murderer and a liar. Well, okay, lies, we have tons of examples of that, but what about murder? Well, maybe we don't have a lot of examples of the devil murdering, but we have a lot of examples of murder in the Bible. And, and you almost, you know, when you read this, you almost wonder, well, who's the author of all that? Was it Satan kinda putting it in someone's heart to, to do such an act and uh,
Doesn't James even say that, that God can't do evil? I mean, when I've read James with data, I mean, it's in, I think, the first chapter where it's like, you can be tempted and God will maybe put.
Correct.
Be tested by God, you'll be tempted by Satan. Uh, and it's based on that.
There's a difference, absolutely. So, so yeah, so the, the devil's here, right, and he put it into the heart of Judas, right, to um, to betray Jesus. So Jesus, knowing that the Father had given all things into his hands and that he had come from God, that he was going back to God, rose from supper, laid aside his outer garments and taking a towel, tied it around his waist. When he poured out, uh, poured water into a basin, he began to wash the disciples' feet and to wipe them with the towel that has, was wrapped around him. So, so you have kinda, supper is ended, um, or uh, or it, maybe it hadn't ended, it's during the supper, but you, you have this moment where Jesus gets up, okay? Now, keep in mind, they didn't sit at tables, um, although if you watch The Passion of the Christ, you know, it shows Jesus, the carpenter, making a chair and his mom looking at him like, you're crazy, people would never sit at a table like that. But anyways, they would literally lounge around a table. You imagine a table is kinda maybe a, a raised portion on the floor with, and there's cushions all around it, and they would kinda just lay down and lounge around. Oh, could you check our, somebody texted, we were getting.
Just popped up. Okay. Said, we're, we aren't getting any sound.
Okay, so somebody just called me. I had to stop it, so I don't know if that messed up.
Um, let's see. Let me look.
Okay. So tell me if you're not getting any sound now.
Are you, are you on?
I am.
You still live? I don't necessarily want to be in the shot. Okay.
Still picking us up?
She's in the shot.
She is in the shot.
She's in the shot.
Okay. Let me check mine.
Okay, we're working on the sound. Oh, I can hear just fine, someone says. Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, somebody called and it does goof it up a little bit when that happens, so I apologize. It was my brother-in-law in Nebraska. So, so yeah, that, so you have a table, it's a, it's a slightly raised table, cushions around, they're all laying down at this table, they're enjoying their Passover meal, right? Jesus stands up from that Passover meal, during the middle of the meal, takes off his outer garments, right, and wraps a towel around his, around his waist, and then he goes up to the disciples, uh, and he begins to wipe their feet down. Now, there's, there's a couple cultural things that are going on, one ceremonial thing that's going on. Typically, what would happen is ceremonially, you would shower, bathe, you would wash yourself. You've been journeying all day, you'd wash yourself, um, before you'd sit down and eat. This was not so much of the cleanliness um, aspect as it was, um, with a uh, uh, ceremonial cleaning before you'd eat. Um, so then, what would happen then, is as you walked in, typically a household would have a servant and that servant would then go and um, wipe the feet down, kind of the last dirty thing. So you can imagine, everyone then, when they get to the table, would then have their, their bodies would be clean, that would be a ceremonial thing, but physically it would be clean too. And even their feet would be clean, cause your feet are on cushions and around, you know, so it's not like everybody, you know, you're laying next to feet too, as you're sitting down to eat and uh, um, and so that's kinda the, the cultural thing. That wasn't so much of a ceremonial thing, but it was a cultural thing and it was done to respect, usually the lowest person in the household would be the one to do it. So a servant, it could be the youngest, uh, boy, it could be whatever it is, but it was meant to be certainly the person of honor would not be the one to wipe the feet. Um, so culturally, um, what Jesus is doing is like, whoa, 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 no, 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 that's not what we do here. Right? So imagine, um, imagine a person that you have aligned yourself with for three years, that you have incredible respect for, right? Um, and, and uh, um, somebody you, you look to is not just a mentor and a teacher, but beyond that, um, decides that they're gonna wash your dishes, take out your trash and clean your dog while they're at your house, right? And you just, you were like, no, no, that's not what we do here. But that's what Jesus is about to do. Um, so he, he uh, he sits down to wrap, uh, to wipe the feet of all of his di- this, his disciples. So in verse six, um, it says, he came to Simon Peter. So this is why Simon Peter has the reaction that he does. He came to Simon, Simon Peter, who said to him, Lord, do you wash my feet? He's like, whoa, 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 whoa. Why would you wash my feet? Now, in our culture here in America, we don't quite understand, um, hierarchy of status, right? We don't understand status levels and status symbols. That is not a Western thing. We are founded in this country that all men are created equal, right? Um, that, that every one of us are equal in God's sight, that there's no one who is of greater importance to another. So the richest man in the world and the poorest man in the world, we will look at and we say, both their lives are equal value, okay? The only reason one would serve another person, which should be and would be under the pretense of a job, not so much of respect. Now, in the East, that's certainly different. Um, uh, we were, uh, did a, uh, English is a second language for a Vietnamese community when we were in Baton Rouge and. English is a second language for a Vietnamese community when we were in Baton Rouge and. Um, Baton Rouge has a large Vietnamese population, a lot of, uh, Vietnamese come to Baton Rouge so they can become shrimpers in the Gulf Coast, right? Um, two things that both countries or state and country would have in common. Um, and so part of it, we had a fun thing where we asked the Vietnamese once, uh, every so often to. Throw a party for us, meaning it was not for us, but for them, and all our teachers and all the students. They throw a party and bring in their traditional cuisine, and they would teach us a little bit about their culture. Um, one of the things that made our ESL successful is we had childcare. And the children during childcare were the most. They were very difficult children. I was just saying, they're not very well behaved, they're incredibly disrespectful. Uh, it was really one of the biggest challenges we had. But now, when they threw that party. They were around their parents and they were set in a traditional setting where their parents were. We had one lady who had white hair and she had. Three of the kids always standing right beside her and and it was like. She would take ketchup and they're like, need more ketchup? They'd run and get it and go, here ma'am, yes, madam, whatever you need, ma'am, like everything was. They waited on her, they didn't wait on all of us, but they waited on her hand and foot. For them, age was a matter of respect and you always, always give, show the greatest and utmost respect. For the oldest person in the room. And they knew that culturally. Now, when they weren't around any of the old people, they were rude and crude. But in their cultural setting, it was really neat to see. Um, we don't quite have the same parallel, if you will, in American culture. Um, but for them, eh, this was a very culturally, uh, um. Unique thing, eh, 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 and this would have been really countercultural for Jesus to do this. It really would have been countercultural. Another parallel, only, I'm trying to think of parallels that we have. Um, when, when we go to Uganda, it's, it's amazing. It is one of the most humbling things in the world. Um, to have somebody that, you know, we go there and our mindset is we're there to serve, whatever you need, I'm here to serve you. Right? That's our mindset. We're there, I wanna work, I wanna help, I wanna be useful, I wanna serve, I I want to give, all right? That's kind of our mindset. Um, but you'll have somebody come down and literally, as you walk up to them, they'll bow down before you and they'll, or they'll take a knee before you, they'll. And they do that because they want to show respect. And and they do that because they consider you, uh, you know, as an American who came so far, um, to to bring the gospel of Christ to them. They consider you to be the guest of honor, if you will. Now, what if I as the guest of honor, I almost think it would be considered, I think, I don't know, I I wanna ask somebody, maybe I'll text. Uh, Tori Bosco, their pastor there. But I almost think it would be considered rude if I went there. And I went to their home as they were the host and they, and and as we were the guest of honor, if you will. And I went and took the presence of a knee or of humility or bowing, like I think that would have been like. You know what I mean? That would, that would almost be, I think it would be considered rude. Um, so.
I think you see it. And I I I saw it firsthand in Houston when I was a principal. And we had a significant Mexican population. I got invited to quinceañeras and things like that, it'd be like me going in and say, I tell you what, I'll go serve the food to you all.
Right, yeah.
And they would have looked at me like.
That wouldn't be your place, you you're the guest. And it's not that Jesus was the guest, but he certainly was the person of honor.
And I, I would say for a priest or even a pastor in the Mexican community specifically, it would be. Even probably more so than an educator.
Absolutely, yeah. Uh, you know, so, so. It it, I think we don't fully understand, and I'm not sure we ever could, um, but fully understand and grasp the, uh. Significance of what Jesus is doing here. Um, and 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 I think it helps to just kind of really sit and dwell on that. We read it and go, oh, because he washed dirty, stinky, smelly feet. And and that's true, but there's a, he's breaking a huge cultural barrier here to prove a very, very. Pointed point, right, um, of of what the Son of God came to do.
But in the entire book of John, he's been countercultural.
Yes, he has. Eh, and and he's been counterculture, yeah, it's not just John, he. All the gospels really portray Jesus, everything you would expect him to do, he does the opposite. Um, it's, he just, not what you would expect. So that's where we're at, and and so that's why Peter in verse eight says, you will never wash my feet. Like, no, 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 this is incredibly inappropriate, what you're doing. Right? We say inappropriate, not sinfully inappropriate, just culturally, this is incredibly inappropriate. Right? And he says, you will never wash my feet. Um. And Jesus has this great answer, and this is a, this is the whole point, I mean, of the whole text that we're reading here. He says, if I do not wash you, you have no share with me. What is he basically saying there?
You're not a follower.
Yeah, if if I don't wash your feet, you have no part of me. Now, Peter's not an idiot, he knows, well, I don't want that, I've seen some amazing things, right? You rose the dead, it is in my best interest to be a part of you, right? Um, you said you and the Father are one, if I am not a part of you, then who am I also not a part of? I'm not a part of God, the Father himself, right? So he, you know, he's like, yeah, that's not gonna work. So then, so Peter, always kind of a quick answer, kind of over the top, so what does Peter do? He jumps up and he's like. Okay, well then, not just my feet, but what? My whole body, right? Not, not just my feet, also my hands and my head. Um, and and you could even go back to, again, ceremonially, what is it that? There's, there's a whole washing of our ourselves that happens ceremonially. And so, so Peter's also trying to spiritualize this probably a little too much. Um, and and I don't think we need to do that. I think it's merely a message, not merely, but it is a. Uh, there, I think there's a simpler understanding, and it's just a message of Jesus saying what? I am here to serve you. You need to get in, in your head to to Peter, the disciples, that I am here, um, to be your servant.
You know, I almost read more sarcasm in that comment than I did in Thomas's comment earlier. Someone's like, well, if you're gonna do that, then just bathe me.
And just do the whole thing.
Yeah.
Right, um. So, you know, and Peter, or Jesus is really showing what kind of a Lord he says. So Jesus said to him. The one who has bathed does not need to wash. So that's a reference to, Peter already should have what? Gone through his spiritual, spiritual cleaning, right? The one who has bathed does not need to wash, except for his feet. Now, again, that's going to the cultural thing, right? Because before you ever arrive, you've already washed, and the only thing that is left to do, not ceremonially, but culturally, is what? Is the feet. Uh, but it's completely clean. So, and you are clean. But not all of you, now we're kind of getting into a more of a metaphorical understanding here. Not all of you, for he knew who was to betray him. That was why he said not all of you are clean. So here's the interesting thing, whose feet all did Jesus wash? Including Judas, right? Um, so even Judas got his feet washed. Um, I I find that remarkable. Um, because that means that Jesus died for everyone, including who? Did I miss a comment that just popped up? No, okay. I'm getting all sorts of texts and notices on my phone, I don't know what's from the.
It's just more people saying the sound's fine.
Okay, good, good, okay, we're good. So, um. So that's where we're at, verse twelve. So when he had washed their feet, he put on his outer garments and then resumed his place, and he says to them. Do you understand what I have done to you? You call me teacher and Lord, you're right, for I am. Verse fourteen, if I then, your Lord and teacher, have washed your feet. You also ought to wash one another's feet, for I have given you an example. You, that you also should do as I have done for you. And then here's always kind of an indicator, pay attention whenever you see these truly, trulies, or amen, amen, or verily, verily. Um, you'll see it translated a number of different ways. Truly, truly, I say to you, a servant is not greater than his master. So what is he saying? He's saying, look, I am your servant, right? Nor is the messenger greater than the one who sent him. Um, if you know these things, blessed are you if you do them. So he gives, um, it it's not spoken in such of a mandate, but what is he telling the disciples that they're called to do?
Serve one another.
Go serve, yeah. Go serve one another. Be a servant to one another. Um. He says. There he's referring to Judas, right? Um, meaning I know who it is who's going to destroy me or kill me or, uh, uh. What am I trying to say, uh? Betray me. He says, I'm telling you this now before it takes place, that when it does take place, you may, that you may believe that I am he. Um, truly, truly, I say to you, whoever receives the one I send receives me. And whoever receives me receives the one who sent me. So what is he saying? He says, okay. He just gave them a command, he says, there, as I have washed your feet, this is what your calling is. Go out and serve the people, right? Serve the world, serve each other. And he says, and look, those who receive you receive the one who sent you. Well, who sent the disciples? Jesus did, and if they receive the one who sent you, then they also receive the one who sent him. So, right, so here's the thing. As you go out, if those who you serve receive you, then they also receive Christ. If they receive Christ, ergo, they also receive the Father. You see how the, it all swims upstream, if you will, back to the Father. So we are really messengers of Christ. As we are messengers of Christ and we are received by those who we give that message to. Then the message goes to Christ, which goes to the Father, and then there's a connection. Isn't it kind of a cool thing? It it's a, it's a real cool thing, that tells what? To God himself. Isn't that cool? People will have access to God himself through you. That's pretty neat. Right? Um, I, I, it's humbling neat, right? Uh. So, um, it goes into Judas, I'm gonna skip down to verse thirty-one now. Cause, cause he gives them a command and, and this command. Of a mandate language. Um, so when he had gone out, Jesus said, now is the Son of Man glorified and that God is glorified in him. If God is glorified. Children, right, um, I love that. As I said to the Jews, so now I also say to you, where I am going, you cannot come. And he says, a new commandment I give. To love one another. By this, all people will know that you are my disciples if you have love one for another. Let me ask you a quick question. Is this referring to? Who are we called to love here? Let me, let me ask that question. Give it your best shot. Who are we called to love? Is this a call to love everyone?
Everyone.
Or is it a call to love? Just the people kind of one another? Is he talking about the, who's the another, right? Is the another just those in the church? Is the another the whole world? What do you think? And then, and break it down grammatically, then who's the they? They will know that you are my disciples if you have love for one another. So there's, there's a debate here that could happen.
Well, I think it's best probably to keep it simple. It is that we're to love each other in the body of Christ.
Right, and certainly the Bible has a lot of examples where it talks about. How we in the body of Christ are called to love each other, right?
Now, unless you know of some Greek that one that you quoted, uh, that people that see us realize how much we love each other. That keeps it pretty clear that that's people outside of the body. Who see us and realize we love each other.
Right, so those outside see the love that we would, so one way to interpret this is that those outside the bio, body. See how we inside the body have love for one another, right? And then they know that we are his disciple because of the way that we all are together in unity as the church. You you hear what I'm saying? Yeah.
Does certainly shed light on, I mean, the whole idea of hypocrisy. We always take with people who see, who are non-believers who see Christians when they leave church, but. Could also follow in us for how we treat one another within the church, if they see in terms of that.
How how important is it that a church is? Not that they never have disagreements or conversations, but in the end, that they always have unity in Christ. Eh, it's really important, you you.
Well, I was reading Ephesians today for the men's devotion for tomorrow, and I was looking at Ephesians where it's the unity in faith.
Yeah.
Paul's talking about it as well, just the fact that we should have unity in our faith.
Usually when the Bible talks about how we are to love one another, it is. Usually, now, it it gets interpreted, and there's a lot of other verses we go to. But it often gets interpreted as how we are to love one another, just can't we all in the world get along? Usually, though, it is more of a reference to how we in the church are called to walk together and treat each other. In faith. Um. Churches have conflict, I mean, eh, 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 it happens, and we we all probably been part of and and know of and. Um. Churches that have conflict. I think if I pray for anything more than in, eh, anything. It would be that, man, can our church always walk together?
Here's the Ephesians four passage I was talking about, which goes right along. With all humility and gentleness, with patience bearing with one another in love, eager to maintain the unity of the Spirit and the bond of peace.
So that's Ephesians four.
Verses two, three, and there's one body and one spirit, just as you recall, to the one hope that belongs to your call.
Right, so two, three and four there, yeah. Yeah, and and so that's a great, another great place to to turn to, even First Corinthians thirteen, right? Uh, when Paul talks about, that's the great marriage, right? Faith, hope and love, and the greatest of these is love. Um, and you hear those verses read in the wedding. Those verses, which is appropriate and fine, but those verses are really pertaining to how we are called to love each other in a church. Um, thirteen follows naturally eleven and twelve, which is when they have the. Conflict, when Paul really gets mad at them for the conflict that they have in communion, that they don't take communion together.
You know, I I thought of that because you've said that before about First Corinthians thirteen, and it's often called the love chapter for weddings and things like that. But it's about more about our, how we interact. And when Dan was talking this last Sunday and said, do you wanna be right or do you wanna be effective? I thought of that because Paul refers to, you know, something without love is really like a.
Glinging symbol or whatever, yeah. Yeah, if you do not have love, you're a, you're just a loud noise.
So if all I wanna do is be right, then I really don't have love.
Now, my father-in-law, uh, told me one time, he says, just 'cause you're right doesn't mean people wanna hear it. And, uh, um, yeah, ouch. Um, and and, but he's right, you know, sometimes being right is the wrong thing. Um, you know, it's never bad to be right within our own selves, but when we are more, uh. When our desire is more to prove ourselves right and the other person wrong, or desires to prove ourselves right. In order, because we feel like we need to shape, fix, mold, move somebody. It's not always very well received and, uh.
Well, and what's in your heart that you're doing it though?
Yeah, yeah, i- is my heart really in in the care and the love for someone else? And and oftentimes when I, you know. The way my brain works is oftentimes I'm like, well, but I'm right, therefore this person should just naturally want to hear what I have to say. Eh, not true, right? Um, so I have to stop myself and I would say, well, before they wanna hear how, eh, eh, hear what I have to say, I think they, I think they do, they just don't know they do. Right? That's how my brain thinks. I first need to let them know that I care about them and that this is coming from a place of love and heart and respect. Uh, so sometimes I have to turn my, I have to be countercultural to my own brain to be effective and. Um. But yeah, I, you know, I I am thankful. So thankful, and and I pray God continues to bless us as a church, because we just don't have. A lot of conflict and I, and and, uh, you know, like I said, we have.
Here it comes.
No, there's. Um, I hope we don't.
Up till that Wednesday, when he brought that up at church.
Right, that's. Say, I don't wanna knock on wood, God has blessed us with that, we don't have to knock on wood. He'll continue to bless us with that and and, uh. You know, and again, it's not that there's not some real discussions that need to have and have, have had and. Um, some real, but, but I think generally you can navigate through differences and discussions. If we understand the foundation of what Jesus's desire is for his church. I I I'm hitting this hard right now because, because we're gonna jump into John seventeen, which is. Jesus, what's the one thing, there is one prayer that Jesus, that we know of. Right, where that Jesus says, I mean, Jesus obviously prayed a lot, but only one of them's recorded, right? The Lord's Prayer is his teaching moment, he says, when you pray, you pray like this. But there's only one time when Jesus says, Father, I am speaking to you. But there's only one time when Jesus says, Father, I am speaking to you, that we know of, and it's John seventeen. Right? And, and what is the one thing he prays? May they be one as you and I are one. And he points it back to the same motif of, because as you and I, or as they are one, as you and I are one, those in the world will see them and notice. Right? We should be able to have an incredible love for each other that is so unique and so different that the world goes, ah, man, that's incredible. I, I don't recognize that. That is not normal. Right? You know, it, it, and it, it's, it's a cool thing.
Well, it, I agree with you that it's, it's, our, our church is at a good spot, but it's one of those things you should never take for granted and you should always cultivate.
I, I agree a hundred percent. I agree a hundred percent. And, and we, you know, I point to Gabby because she is part of those conversations. We spend a lot of time saying, you know, sometimes unity can come out of apathy too. You know, and I, and that's one of our fears is, is we wanna make sure that unity is, is an active unity. It's not a passive unity.
And it comes out of conflict.
Yeah. And unity does come. Churches that have turmoil. So it's just like a marriage, right? Marriages go up and down and up and down, right? Why are you nodding your head so much? No, I'm just kidding. She's like, yep. No, no, marriages go up and down and up and down. But uh uh Jim Oden is, is the one who told me is that it's in the tr- uh the valleys of the troughs that, that we really learn how to love each other. Um and so, so it's, it's, you know, it's up and down. We hope it goes up and down though, kinda like a stock market trending up always. But uh, I'm just kidding, David. It's okay.
What's that?
Oh, you're.
Well, and it doesn't have to be that you're having a conflict with your husband. It may be a bad situation you're going through together.
Absolutely. Yep. That, that could be loss of job. That could be, you know, loss of life. That can be all sorts of. Uh life is filled with tragedies. One of the things I worry about in our American culture, and this is maybe a little too, you know, sidetracked, but, but that we try so hard to avoid tragedy. Um and we try to avoid tragedy, um because we think that when tragedy comes, that it's the end. And, and, and there's studies that would show that this is why uh depression and anxiety are, are higher amongst young people than they ever were, right? And why is it? Because we shelter them, we protect them, we don't let them fail. And, and whenever there is a failure, it's an unacceptable thing. And, oh my gosh, now what do we do? And everything's set off. No, they, they're failure and tragedy, and these are all parts of life. And part of what it is to live is to understand redemption and mercy and, and forgiveness and, and overcoming and, and second chances and you know, and all of those things, those are the things that the gospel preaches, right?
I agree with that, but I think I'd back off two words like failure and tragedy because they're extreme words. I'd go so far as to say pain.
Pain? Is that what you said?
Try to avoid pain.
Avoid pain, yeah.
On a scale of one to ten, all, all levels.
Sure.
Put a helmet on a kid learning to ride a tricycle.
Right.
That's figuratively speaking. But I think, you know, we're just as guilty of that and our, we don't have hard conversations like we should.
Pain and maybe loss, like when I say loss, not loss of life, that'd be more towards a failure and tragedy extreme, but yeah.
If you love somebody, you have a hard conversation with them.
Yeah, yeah. But we won't have hard conversations. We don't like having hard conversations. We don't wanna have conflict with somebody, even though that conflict may be necessary. Because the conflict is something that will show, or it, it be, yeah, it, it, it's a because the, the more we admit things that are wrong in our world, the more, and, and this isn't to get into that book again, but the more uh we have to look at the fact that progress maybe isn't as good as we hope it is. Right? Um Dan and I were talking the other day about the, the myth of progress. And, and you're like, okay, so people live longer, life is easier. What else can we say about progress? Uh technology, you know, gives conveniences. But relationships are more broken. Um depression and anxiety are at all time highs, especially amongst youth. Suicide is at an all time high. Um so are we better today than we were fifty years ago? With the rhetoric, we would be always to say that we are better today than we were fifty years ago. And the question is, is that true? It matters what.
We're still sinful human beings.
We're still sinful human beings. It matters what metric we're using to define what better is. Um and so we gotta be real careful about how we talk about these things. Anyways, that's getting way sidebar. The, the uh, the moral of the story though, is that we need to learn how to do life together again. And, and it should be an active life together. And, and not a passive one. Um so what does that look like, you know, in a church? You know, there, there's a lot of things that we're looking forward to of when the pandemic subsides, whatever that looks like. Um but we, we, I was telling you this earlier, David, we have a, an aggr- an aggressive fall planned. Just, and aggressive means doing a lot of things and, and we're gonna do a lot of things and we're gonna request a lot of things. And I know we have a lot of members that do a tremendous amount of things. Um but we're gonna really push on it. And the reason is, is because we have been out of community for a long time now. Community as we know it and as we're familiar with. Um and so how do we kinda jumpstart that back again? That's, that's gonna be a real important thing for us to do. Uh but you know, in the meantime, you know, we're kinda life as usual until I don't know, whatever green light indicator we're waiting for. I don't know what that will look like. I, I have a theory. It's just a theory that when September comes and school starts again. And I, my prayer is that at least locally here, we'll start school as we would recognize it normally. And if that happens, that schools really play an important cultural. As the school goes, so will everyone else. And that's what I'm hoping for. Very good. So, um but this is the new commandment, right? Um and, and so Jesus says, love one another. I think it is not a bad thing to take a broader understanding of that. It's not like we're out of the realm of, we're out of the picture frame, if you will. To, in the broader understanding of that, it would be that he's just telling us, love one another, meaning the world, love your neighbor, right? Now, I, I don't think we need to go here though, I, cause I, one, I don't think that's what it's referenced to. I think we just simply go to Jesus's command, love your neighbors yourself. It's the same thing, right? Uh but that is broad to the sense of.
He refers to this as a new commandment, which would be separate from that. Which is interesting that he literally has to command us to love one another. You would think that would almost be a natural state of church.
Yeah, yeah. So when it says new, you know, do we read new as different or uh um as in the old is gone and the new has come or separate from? Sometimes when we read new, you know, he does this, um and Matthew, you know, it's not here, but he, what does he say in the Lord's Supper? He's right, right? This is the new covenant, right? Does new mean like the old is gone and the new has come? This is a brand new one? Or is it kind of a renewed covenant? And so another way I think we could interpret that is a renewed commandment or a remind you of the, the mandate that you have to love one another. Um but, but I, I don't know. We, and that, that could be debated. I'm not saying that's the way it is, but there's, there's a conversation perhaps there. It's a research that could happen there.
That would be where it's handy to know the Greek.
Yeah, yeah, um.
Hebrew.
I can go get my Greek. But probably wouldn't help. Yeah. So mov- moving on. So, so we get into Peter's denial, right? This, this is, this is a great little section. Peter said to him, Lord, where are you going? Jesus answered, where I'm going, you cannot follow me. And what does Peter say, right? Oh, why can I not follow you? I'll lay down my life for you. And Jesus goes, eh, not so fast. I don't know. The rooster may crow three times before you, or you may deny me three times before that rooster crow. So anyways, he, he says, he says that. Then, and then I know these are great things, okay? And I want to read all of them and spend some time. I encourage you, this is where take the, take this home. Um download it on your computer, uh print it out, you know, when we get it all done, we'll have full packets that people can just pick up if you wanna, don't wanna print all this out. Um but uh uh and, and go through it because uh I, I think it's gonna be uh good for everyone, but, but so a lot of good stuff there. Um he's, you know, I am the way, the truth, and the life. No one comes to the Father except through me, right? That's when Philip, a conversation with Philip, and he says, you, you talk about how you and the Father are one. How do we get to the Father? And he says, basically, through me. That's how you do it. You have the promise of the parocle, um uh uh or the helper, um the Holy Spirit. Um I found a neat, an interesting note about how the parocle in the Old Testament was always seen as one who would stand up on behalf of another, like almost in a judicial sense. Um and uh, but you have the Holy Spirit. He gives that promise of the Holy Spirit. You have the, I am the vine and you are the branches. I mean, um if you ever wanna really meditate on a scripture, um I often will go to uh chapter fifteen, that first part of fifteen, I am the vine, you are the branches, um and meditate. Uh you can read that verse or that section, verses one, one to eleven, uh one, uh I'll go further, one to seventeen. You can read that section every day for a month and pray on it and pick out a different theme or topic or motif for us to focus on uh every time. It really is full of just tremendous either whether we're talking about abiding in him, abiding in love, being the branches, right? Bearing fruit. I mean, it, it, there's just so much. Um again, in verse twelve of chapter fifteen, uh what does it say? This is my commandment that you love one another as I love you. You almost get this repetitive theme that just keeps coming up, right? Greater love has no one than this, that someone lay down his life for his friends. You are my friends if you do what I command you. No longer do I call you servants, for the servant does not know what his master is doing, but I have called you friends. And again, remember I, I had a sermon on this not so long about how we can call Jesus a friend. Um you were out of town or sick or something that Sunday, but uh um you know, it, it's a great thing and uh. So anyway, so there's, there's a lot of good stuff. Hatred of the world. It's not that we are to hate the world, but guess what? As we abide in the truth, the world will not like us always for that, right? So you know, should we be surprised when the world turns its back on Christians? No, the Bible says it's gonna happen. Um so what are we called to do? Abide in the word, stay connected to the vine as the branches be rooted and bear fruit, right? And will we win all for the sake of the gospel? No, that was what Dan's sermon, I, I believe was about on Sunday, um right? Paul became all things to all people. Why? So that he may win some. Some.
For the sake of the gospel.
For the sake of the gospel. And uh so, so we shouldn't be so upset. I mean, it's never a thing, I mean, we shouldn't be so surprised. Like sometimes we're so offended when the world doesn't like the church. I'm like, well, I don't think we need to be so offended. Um but we should always fight for the church, but we should fight for love for, through our love for one another and through our proclamation of the gospel and bearing fruit, right? That's how we combat evil in the world.
And that's the context that Dan put it in with the, do you wanna be right or be effective?
Right.
I mean, do you really wanna go down the road of pick the cause, pick the time and say, you know, this world is no longer this and this world is no longer this, or do you wanna go ahead and be effective for the sake of the gospel?
Yeah. You know, um I heard more comments about Dan's sermon. He used to do more impromptu sermons.
The text I sent him, I said, you know, challenge is, they're just gonna throw you the sermon the day of.
So what I need to do is, so I create the preaching schedule and I'll, I'll create it and uh, I'll just tell them, you're not preaching anymore. And then on Sunday morning, I mean, by the way, sermon's yours today.
I like it.
And just roll with it. Cause I've heard more people compliment and comment on a sermon this past week. All right, let's go to uh, let's go to chapter seventeen. We're, we're on time.
About thirty minutes.
About thirty minutes. So we're gonna keep with the same theme, but, but again, um you made a comment, David, say your comment loud so the microphone can pick up about this prayer, the high priestly prayer.
Oh, we had a, we had a study down in Houston when I was going to church there and our good friend Todd Dittloff, who was the pastor at the time, said, we have the Lord's Prayer and it's the one that was taught by Christ, as you noted earlier. He said, but this is often referred to as the true Lord's Prayer.
Right. So this is the true Lord's Prayer. When you think about it, this is the one the Lord prayed, right? It wasn't what he taught us to pray. It was his prayer. Um and it's the entire chapter. It's a long prayer.
Contextually, I, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
The prayer in Gethsemane that he prays before he gets arrested?
No, this is not. Um the only prayer that we know of in Gethsemane is when he says, um take this cuff from me, but not my will be done, but your will be done.
Okay. I do ask that because I think eighteen picks up that when he finishes, says when the.
That's when you have the arrest and, yeah, I, um, I'm trying to leave.
He was a deep prayer for a long time, so.
He, he really is. Um but I've never associated this with the garden of Gethsemane prayer. You know, there's not a lot of movement. You know, you have in uh thirteen thirty-one when he had gone out, that's when he gives uh there's just not a lot of movement. So, so we, uh in interpretation, it really helps to follow the movements. It helps give timeline. There's just not a lot of movement texts in here.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
That was simple enough for now.
Okay. Um so uh, so in verse seventeen, when Jesus had spoken these words, right? This is when he talks about overcoming the world. Um he lifted up his eyes to heaven and said, Father, the hour has come. Glorify your son, that the son may glorify you. The other thing is, I don't, the garden of Gethsemane is not mentioned in John. I don't, I don't think it's mentioned at all. That's kind of a unique Matt, Mattian, Lukean, Markan uh theme, so. Glorify your son, that the Father may glorify you, since you have given him authority over all flesh to give eternal life to all whom you have given him. And this is eternal life, that they know you, the only true God, and Jesus Christ whom you have sent. I glorified you on earth, having accomplished the work that you have given me to do, gave me to do. I now, Father, glorify, now and now, Father, glorify me in your own presence with the glory that I had with you before the world existed. Kind of an interesting prayer there. You notice he speaks in the present tense, which is interesting. He speaks in the present tense as the mission accomplished, right? And uh, um what is he, in, in some might say timeline and all this stuff, but what he's doing is just presupposing that he knows the fate. He knows the mission is accomplished. He knows the victory is won. He knows his death is at hand, right? He knows all that is coming. And so he says, look, this is finished. There's no overturning. Um Satan is lost at this point. So verse six, I have manifested your name to the people whom you gave me out of the world. Yours they were, and you gave them to me, and they have kept your word. Now they know that everything that you have given me is from you, for I have given them the words that you gave me, and they have received them and have come to know the end truth, that I came from you, and they have believed that you sent me. So it's again, the connection. They listen to the words that I have proclaimed and they're listening to the words that I have proclaimed, connects them to the Father. And as they're connected to me, they are also connected to the Father. And as you have sent me with the message, I have given that message on to them. So it's just this reciprocation. People to Jesus, to the Father, to Jesus, to the people, right? And that's the road to the Father. You cannot get to the Father except through Jesus. Verse nine, I am praying for them. I'm not praying for the world. Kinda interesting though. Well, wouldn't you pray for the world? Does Jesus love the world? Absolutely, Jesus loves the world, right? This isn't saying, I'm not praying for them, therefore I don't like them. Sure, he loves the world, but, and what would we understand as world? He's not talking about the birds and the trees. He's talking about all those who are not, who? He's not talking about the birds and the trees, he's talking about all those who are not, who? The church, right? So he says, but for those whom you have given me, for they are yours. All mine are yours, and yours are mine, and I am glorified in them. And I am no longer in the world, but they are in the world, and I am coming to you. Again, the ebb and flow, right? It gets kinda like, huh, what? Right, but you find this ebb and flow, and that's the whole thing, the ebb and flow is what? Jesus' Father, Father, Jesus to the people, people of Jesus' Father, and so forth. By the way, can you skip Jesus and go straight to the Father? Yeah, you can. So somebody says, well, I don't believe in Jesus, but I believe in the same God, we would say, hmm, it's not how that works. That's not the order of operations, right? We, who is the mediator between us and the Father? It's always through Jesus. Verse eleven, uh, verse eleven, where am I at? Let's start with, second part of verse eleven, Holy Father, keep them in your name, which you have given me, that they may be one even as we are one, right? So what is the one thing he finally requests on our behalf? So he kinda goes with the ebb and flow, they listen to me, I am theirs, they are mine, therefore they are yours, and you have given them to me, and, you know, all this back and forth, so what's his one thing? The first thing he says is he prays for them. Let them be one. Then breaks in U2, one love. You don't wanna sing it, right? I went to a U2 concert with David.
Yes, we did, it's a pretty good sized group.
That was in two thousand and?
It was you and Heather and Brian and Michelle and me and Tim Ratch.
Yep.
Those were the couples. There were three couples.
So verse twelve, while I was with them, I kept them in your name, which you have given me, I have guarded them. And not one of them has been lost, except the son of destruction, Judas. Now that Judas, and that the scripture reminded me, but he was lost with a purpose, right? Um, but now I am coming to you, and these things I speak in the world, that they may have my joy fulfilled in themselves. I have given them your word, and the world has hated them, because they are not of the world, just as I am not of the world. I do not ask that you take them out of the world, so this place that they live in, they all, it all hates them, right? He says, no, but I don't want them removed from that, they need to stay where they're at. I do not ask you to take them out of the world, but that you keep them from the evil one. They are not of the world, just as I am not of the world. Sanctify them, what does that mean, sanctify?
Make more holy.
Make more holy? What does holy mean?
Righteous.
Righteous, set apart is often a word used with that. So set them apart, meaning keep them holy, more righteous, set them apart, they need to look what? Different, right? Sanctify them in the truth, your word is truth, as you sent me into the world, so I have sent them into the world, and for their sake I consecrate myself, and they also may be sanctified in truth. So there's two things, right, that he asks on their behalf. Sanctify them and help them be one. Why does he say this prayer out loud? Out of all the prayers that he said, why is this the only one he says out loud? Oftentimes, as he went by himself to pray quietly, why is this one out loud? It's a very logical, practical answer to that.
Well, if he's praying over his disciples, then they need to hear it.
Yeah, it's simply so the people there can hear it. So what's the message they walk away with? Jesus and the Father, there's a connection through there. We are called to be one, right? And we are called to be set apart, different from the rest of the world.
It's almost like each one, as you say it, if you drew a diagram, it would start with a really tight triangle, and it would broaden out, and it would broaden out, and it would broaden out. So that almost looks like a spider's web by the time it's done, but he's connecting all the parts.
Right.
As he's going along, as you described it, and as we listen. So that's, I, I think they're just realizing how this fits together now.
And then he, yeah, because that's, he starts to broaden it in this very, very next verse, right? He didn't ask for these only, that would be these, the people who are standing right here. He says, but also for those who believe in me through their word. So, so do we believe because of their word? So, in essence, could we say that Jesus is directly praying for us here? Yeah, right? And he's basically saying, I'm praying for all those who are of my body, who hear and believe through their word, right? Through their testimony, you could say. And what's verse twenty-one say? So what is it prayer for the whole church throughout the world, for all who believe? So broader than the, just the those who are listening. That they may all be one. Just as you, Father, are in me, and I am you, that they also may be in us, so that the world may believe you have sent me. So, this is what I find just so amazing. In our ability to be unified as a church is directly related to our ability to be a witness to Christ. You ever think that? So, I, I've had this thought when you go and you talk to somebody, huh? Oh, what church you go to? I go to X Y Z church. Oh, tell me about it, oh, we have such problems. Man, we're just, we're struggling, we don't get along, we're all fighting over this, and, and the color of the carpet, you know, we want blue, they want red, and my goodness, and just, and it's just getting nasty. Yeah, you should come visit sometime. Uh, uh, no, I don't think so. I'll go, I'll go somewhere else, right? Um, that just isn't a good witness, right?
Well, and you've, you've talked about it before, because I guess you either went through it, but we went through it in a church, our church in Houston. The, uh, four pillars.
Yeah.
And the middle one, the central focus is the mission. And then it goes out, the last focus really is kind of personal preferences and things.
Yeah, I, I, I order it this way, oftentimes congregations' conversations start with personal preference, then goes to finances, then goes to who we are in Christ, then goes to the mission. Voters' meetings are oftentimes structured even that way, if they even get to the last two. And really what should happen is that should be flipped over on its head. So conversations within the church really should start to, start with who we are in Christ and our identity, okay? I, I often turn to, uh, fir- First Corinthians five, is it First or Second Corinthians five? But, uh, that we are ambassadors of Christ. We once, for we once regarded Christ, and in this way we do so no longer. Made him who had no sin to be sent for us. Anyways, First or Second Corinthians five, I'll just, oftentimes can't remember the difference between, I'll just go Corinthians five. Let them figure out which one. Um, anyways, um, but, uh, if we start with who we are in Christ, our identity, our, and, and then we understand, and we have conversations about what God has called us and is calling us to do. Where does personal preference fit then, in that conversation? It du- really doesn't at all, right? I mean, it's like, well, I believe this is who we are in Christ, and God has called us to do this. Yeah, but I don't want to, so, right?
Well, and, uh, I think those are conversations we've had recently, um, with the architects in the new construction. Really, how is this building gonna help us facilitate the delivery of the Word of Christ through the school and the church? Personal preferences might say, well, I think we need an industrial kitchen before we need anything. You know, logistically, we may need it because we have a school, but really, I think we've done a good job in saying, okay, but what really is our central role and purpose, and so how is this design gonna roll out based on that?
Yeah, and.
And I, 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 I will say probably I'm ninety percent certain I've heard that conversation held that way, that here are the things that are gonna help us best deliver our message.
I, uh, very humbled by our church's response to our, to our capital campaign and to the mission. I, I, it, it is a very humbling thing. And, and I say humbling just because it, it makes me stand in awe of our members that, just how good and dedicated that, that they are, um, to, to get behind that mission and understand that mission, believe in that mission.
I think even to the point of raising capital, it was more about raising spiritual lives.
I agree. So, so one thing I would say, I, and I.
That's me saying that to you, that's not, I mean, that, that's what I heard as I sat out.
I appreciate hearing that, and, and I appreciated Michael Fuchs and our capital campaign, uh, one of the reasons I believe the committee chose him, uh, was because he very much, and, and, and I know Michael, and he very much believes that. And he, he told me, very first time I met, he goes, you have got to tell me why you're doing this. And he says, and I don't wanna hear about what you're doing, I wanna know why, right? He says, cause if you don't understand the why, how can you ever communicate to the people why? And the why is beyond, you know, oh, we need repair, and we, you know, we gotta fix holes, and we need more kitchen utensils. You, you know, it's, it's, there's a grander why and the understanding of how does this fulfill God's mission in this church? Um, and, uh, you know, so, so, and, and, and I had an idea, but we, you know, but, but nev- never sat down and really articulated on paper, you know, and, and it really forced me to really think through and make sure, okay, that there's a reality check of, A, you know, and as we talk through it, is, is our why right and appropriate and God pleasing? Uh, put it to a spiritual sense, not just kinda trying to deal with physical needs, we get so caught up in that.
Well, even so far as to the logo of the whole thing, and does it really spell out what we want it to?
The legacy of hope, right? In Christ, so.
So to these verses, I think, that's why I brought up the.
Yeah. No, I, I, I agree, and, and, uh, um, so anyways, I think we can just kinda stop there, the, uh, the verse, I, I don't remember where I stopped.
You were on twenty through twenty-two.
Yeah.
That's when we started talking about the whole.
Okay, so we'll, we'll finish the prayer, cause we just can't leave it before verse is short. Twenty-three says, I in them, and you in me, that they may become, now it's not just one, it's what? Perfectly one. So that they, so, and again, it's, it's all down to the why. It's not just so we can have better times together. It, it all comes down to the mission of who we are. And the mission of who we are i- is grounded in the how we interact with each other. You know, I already go, oh, Kinley, she's, she's a great Christian, but man, I just don't like her. But, but yeah, come be part of our family. It's not a good witness, you know? You, you know, the opposite, that's why. Father, I desire that they also, verse twenty-four, they also, whom you have given, given me, may be with you, with me where I am, to see my glory that you have given me, because you love me before the foundation of the world. Oh, righteous father, even though the world does not know you, I know you, and these know you, uh, or know that you have sent me, therefore they would also know him. I may know to them your name, and I will continue to make it known, that the love with which you have loved me may be in them, and I in them. I mean, it's just a beautiful prayer that Jesus gives for his church. It's his parting words, what is his desire for us? Jesus's desire for us right before he died was what? Yeah, that's a good sermon right there, I need to preach that one, put that in the bank, right? Um, right, so, so how hard do we try to fulfill God's dying wishes? Our, our, our fellow loved ones dying wishes, right? You know, so grandpa dies, hears their dying wishes, and they lay it out, and we go, okay, it's a little strange, but we'll do it, right? Why? Because we wanna fulfill, honor, right, and here's, here's Jesus's dying wishes, right? I mean, it's.
But they're living wishes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know.
Really, like, this is what it needs to look like.
Yeah, I, I say dying wishes, it's, I, he says it right before he is betrayed, arrested and crucified, but, but then he does say, I'm gonna keep on doing this, right? He, he doesn't say it like as if it's terminal and then ending. So John seventeen, I, I think it's worth, uh, really spending some time reading through that again. But, uh, appreciate it, uh, probably Ash Wednesday is next Wednesday. We will have the imposition of ashes.
Will we have a church service?
We will have a church service at seven o'clock.
Masks, optional.
Masks are optional, the, uh, traditionally, you know, we'll have, uh, eighty or ninety, I think is what we saw at that service. Um, so, uh, social distancing, we'll, we'll have, uh, we, we will, as pastors, we will wear masks, uh, during the imposition of ashes, but, uh, we're not gonna wear any gloves, there's nothing. Yeah, there's some logistical problems, but, but nothing will be in the mouth, right? So there's not like communion where then that wafer that I hand you goes and is consumed, so, uh.
So it needs to be a risk we're willing to.
Yes, sir, yeah, if, if, uh, if masks are a necessity, uh, we will have the imposition of ashes, uh, dur- during the day. So if, if you can't make it to the worship service, uh, I think the, any mail went out today perhaps, as well as maybe it's on our website, but, we'll have, uh, we'll be here eight thirty to nine thirty, then we have chapel, so, uh, we will, uh, kinda take that break, and then I think from ten on, we'll have somebody here. So, so all are welcome to come by, and, and, uh, we'll certainly, again, have the masks on during that. So, so you're welcome to come by and get, get ashes during the day as well. But, but, you know, a hundred people can still distance pretty well. When we get more than a hundred, it starts to get a little crowded perhaps, but. Very good, appreciate it, God's blessings to y'all.